Let's go ahead and get started. All right, it is 6:32 PM and we will go ahead and start our city council work session. Our topic tonight is the 2022 revised budget and 2023 proposed budget with Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So, we are in the final stretch for the budget, which feels really, really good. So, the packet was long this week, but a lot of it was information that you've already seen through the course of our discussions. So, for purposes of this evening, this is really loud tonight. What I thought I would do is I've got a PowerPoint presentation where we'll touch on a couple of high points, and then I really want to spend our time this evening kind of talking about the supplemental requests and the other things that we've recommended for use of the excess general fund reserves and kind of run through that in more detail, including what was not in the memo, but you have a handout at your place tonight, which we'll kind of talk about those things which were not included in the supplemental requests. Yes? How about that? Better? I know, I'm trying not to say. It's better for me when I look at it there, but it's not up there. And... Can you make me not? Or they have to, I guess, the public. Okay, there we go. And then, in thinking about... So, we'll kind of focus our attention on that, make sure we answer any questions, address any concerns, providing additional information you might have on the supplemental requests. And then, as we move toward next week, it's really just that public-facing community dialogue. So, we'll bring the fund detail pages and all of the other parts and pieces that you've seen as well, kind of together. And I'll touch on a couple of things. I lost two documents the last two days that I'd hoped to have ready tonight, but I think they're most appropriate for the community dialogue on the budget. And then, on the seventh, all of those things will move forward to our special city council meeting, where we'll hold the hearings on the revenue neutral rate and the budget itself, and then adopt our budgets for revised 2022 and 2023. So, we'll go ahead and start with the PowerPoint presentation. The first slide, please. Is our agenda for this evening. I think as, as we think about those things particularly that are the supplemental requests or things that align with our values, our goals, our objectives, priorities, we'll spend a few minutes talking about information from our February retreat, our May retreat, the council budget survey, and how all of those things have kind of come together and are impacting and influencing the recommendations in this budget. As I mentioned, we'll touch just very briefly on general fund revenues and expenditures. Then we'll spend a little bit of time in the Climate Action Plan Task Force recommendations, PRT recommendations, which are at your place this evening, the SLRF or ARPA recommendations, supplemental requests in, in general that don't fall into either the Climate Action Plan Task Force or the ARPA recommendations, kind of the impact or recommendations related to general fund reserves, the remaining steps in the budget process, and then whatever question. So, next slide, please. So, this, this slide is similar to one that we've seen in a couple of other presentations. It really just recaps those things that we've identified over the course of the last year as council priorities and objectives. So, from the 2022 retreat, we talked about residential street program, pedestrian-focused streets, sustainability and climate action plan implementation, commercial code enforcement, parks planning and implementation, small business partnerships and initiatives, feasibility study for the community center, gateway solution, building codes update and development activity. So, several of those we'll see reflected in the budget document. Others, not yet. We've talked about the feasibility study recommendations are probably coming sometime, I would imagine, in the next 60 days. We have calendared our conversations around the gateway, so that, that's coming here in the next 30 days. Development activity, we will continue to talk about. We just received today a second draft of the comprehensive plan update, so we'll be coming back and calendaring that for kind of final discussion and adoption later this year and into the first part of next year. So, a lot of these things are continuing to move. Then, in the 2022 council budget survey process, we looked at where did we have the most consensus around high priority projects in the budget, and that included street maintenance, stormwater, infrastructure maintenance, and economic development. Other priorities that were identified through that short Survey Monkey survey were the potential acceleration of stormwater and street repairs, large-scale park and street investments, a planning tool to design downtown to attract desired businesses, permanent mental health coresponder funding with a mission-specific focus, and complete streets and trails. So, again, all of those things are kind of woven and have been included in our budget preparation and development to date. So, next slide, please. And then, in our May 2020 governing body retreat, you may recall that we identified five key performance areas, which reflected the council's top priorities and objectives. As a part of that work at the retreat, we also developed outcome statements for each of those key performance areas. And we agreed that moving forward, our budget and policy recommendation should be tied back to those key performance areas. That was one of the documents that I lost, and we'll have that for our community dialogue. But as we present the budget and the supplemental requests and recommendations, we'll tie those very specifically back to all of these key performance indicators. But just to recap, we had infrastructure, economic development, sustainability, parks and recreation, and municipal operations, and I won't read the outcome statements. But that's, that's kind of been, again, as we create the public-facing docu-, more public-facing documents, and then as we continue our conversations and as we implement projects and programs, we'll really work and have a concentrated effort to connect those to the key performance areas. Next slide, please. So, in our general fund revenues and expenses, this is just a recap. There's not much of a change from the totals that you saw in previous budget work sessions. But it did just, things have gotten a little bit better on the revenue side because we've, I think we touched on this at our council meeting in my report on the interim financials. The used tax revenues that we had such a substantial refund for over the last several months are really coming in strong. So, we will, we'll see some, somewhat of a decline there, but not, I think, as much as we had anticipated. But right now, we're sitting at about 13.5 million, almost 13.6 million dollars in the 2023 budget in revenues and total revenues. It's actually a 0% increase over 2022 estimated. So, there's some movement among budget categories, but overall, we are expecting at this point that our revenues will be roughly equal to what we collect at the end of this year. And so, this chart and graph, and again, kind of breaks down, and we've talked about that, the key drivers of our revenues, sales tax, property tax, fines and forfeitures in our parks and recreation revenues. We've continued to monitor expenditures as we do every year. We were able to make some adjustments. We had to make some adjustments up, actually, over the last couple of months as we continue to see things and prices on things like pool chemicals and things like that that are increasing as a result of supply chain issues or just overall price increases. But I think overall, those were very minimal. Right now, we're still showing, I included this graph of our general fund expenses by function just as a reference. But as we move through and come to some consensus on the supplemental requests, where we have agreement and those that impact the general fund, we will go back between now and next week's presentation and plug those into the appropriate operating departments. So, these expenses by function will change. We anticipate those will change here in the next week to be reflective of that. And next slide, please. Kind of the only outstanding, what I would call, policy issue that we kind of have at this point, despite the timeline for Senate Bill 13 implications and the revenue neutral rate hearings that have been established, the county still wants us to certify all of our special assessments by August 25th, which happens to be tomorrow. I don't know why they need that additional time to get it set up on the tax bills, but they do. And so, kind of the one thing that we had talked about and we had presented in the recommended budget includes, we were recommending holding the homeowner's portion of the solid waste utility fee constant in 2023 at $193.02 a year, which is assessed on a property tax bill. And that we have the ability in the budget, actually with a reduction in the transfer from the general fund to the solid waste utility fund to accommodate the 5% increase that GF, had been requested by GFL. So, if there's, we might take a break really quickly there and see if there's any questions or, because again, we do have to certify that, certify that to the county tomorrow.
Questions for Laura on the, the fee, are we good, holding?
For the residents? Okay. Yes?
What, what would be the total expenditure on the city for the, for the addition?
So, the... We can, we can accommodate that. I'm trying to find the right sheet. I got it. So, if you look at the general fund summary, yeah, general fund summary page that you've, that we've included, based on kind of the balance in the solid waste utility fee or the solid waste utility fund currently, we're actually able, both in 2022 and 2023, we've been transferring about $85,000 and we're able to reduce that transfer by $10,000 to the city. So, we are able, I think, with what we have, to hold that rate for this year for the residents and to actually, even with the rate increase, recognize a little bit of savings on the impact of the general fund. So, what the residents pay is the majority of that 193.02 pays the majority of the solid waste bill.
Okay, so we don't have a figure for what the city would be paying?
$75,000.
$75,000. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. Wanted to just briefly touch, again, we've seen this before on the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement program that worksheets that were included in your packet last Friday, and go ahead and go to the next slide, please, are reflective of those projects which we discussed in our, I don't remember, July or August work session, and a couple of other things that have been added as supplemental requests. So, I just wanted to touch on that, and we've combined kind of revenues. We have the revenue assumptions for our three program areas, stormwater, streets, and parks and recreation. And then, the expenditure. So, on the stormwater side, we've talked about, and again, this aligns with council priorities with stormwater maintenance. So, we increased the funding available by $250,000 a year to address stormwater maintenance projects. That was an addition on $150,000, which had been programmed in previous capital improvement programs. So, again, aligning with that sort of value and priority for the council. And then, we also added as a part of the supplemental request, increasing, right now, we are doing a periodic cleanout of all of our creek channels on a four-year cycle. The weeds grow back. We off, you know, much more quickly than four years. And so, it looks oftentimes like we aren't doing any maintenance, and so, an additional $10,000 is what Public Works has estimated would allow us to move to a two-year cycle. So, that's been factored in, and the stormwater CIP program has been adjusted to be reflective of that more frequent cleanout. So, that kind of addresses, I think, you know, some of the aesthetic goals that, that we've had and things that we talk about, as well as just keeping those creek channels well-maintained. On the street side, really didn't have major changes, but we did as far as a supplemental request, add pedestrian-activated stop signs at 61st and Broadmoor. So, the target post office, Wellstone intersection, that's a request that I think for at least probably, I don't know, the word for folks probably know better, I would say probably maybe five or six years, and they've asked about trying to improve the safety and the ability to cross more effectively at that intersection. And so, through a supplemental request in the street program, those have been included. We're actually able to do that through savings realized in Foxridge design. So, that, that's been added. And then, on the parks and recreation side, we have added, and you'll be seeing bids coming forward at your September committee meetings for a task order for a design of resurfacing of the Broadmoor Park Trail. We have sufficient funds in the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Fund currently to be able to make that improvement in that existing park. It's a high priority. You'll see that aligns with one of the priorities of the Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission. It also, we're able to do that because improving that trail doesn't impact any of the future improvements that are contemplated in the conceptual plans. And that's one of the most highly-used features of, of that park. So, although we won't be able to accomplish that prior to September 20th, the renewal of the sales tax election, we are going to be able to do that within 2022 and 2023. So, excited about that opportunity. Next slide, please.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'd still like, for the record, consideration for a pedestrian crosswalk at Johnson Drive-In Rigs. There's nothing between Lamar and Barkley to get people across the street. And I haven't, it hasn't come up as much as the 61st Street has, but I still have constituents who are interested in seeing us pursuing that crosswalk.
Yeah, and so, I know that we've just received back some of the pedestrian count data. So, we, after one of our budget discussions, we committed to collecting that pedestrian count data. So, we're in the process of analyzing that and can certainly bring something back. And that's as we move into some of the other recommendations, kind of talk about where some of these other projects could be slated in or considered and some of the other funding sources.
Thank you.
Okay, we've talked around the edges for a long time about our ARPA or state and local fiscal recovery or whatever we want to call it, but I think as we're all aware, we were allocated just a little over $1.5 million in funds as a result of the pandemic and opportunities to recover from that. One of the things that, early on in the process, we kind of sat tight because the rules for spending of these dollars were under consideration and discussion and revision. And in fact, ultimately, when the final rulings came out in early 2022, I think there were some things that really potentially benefit us in, in our conversations about what we may want to do with that. One of, the, the second document that I lost was an illustration of, of some of our actual revenue losses over this time period. So, I'll recreate that. I don't know where it is in cyberspace somewhere.
Laura, that, that number is closer to two and a half million, right?
When we look at, yes, so when we look at the calculation that Ellers did for us before the final rule came out, you, the cities had, there was a process whereby cities had, had to evaluate their actual revenue loss over a period of time allowed by the act. And Ellers did that calculation for us, and we actually lost about two and a half million dollars over that period of time. That was across all funds. And so, the smaller kind of snapshot that we'll look at and that I'm, I'm working on is more focused on the general fund, where we've had slightly less than that, but still a significant amount. One of the things that I think as we hear and see many of the other neighboring communities, you know, have put forth their recommendations for how they'll be spending their dollars, I would venture a guess that I know that Prairie Village and Roland Park, for example, didn't actually experience significant revenue losses, particularly in their general fund through the pandemic. And so, they, they have, they're looking at potentially some other opportunities. But with this final ruling, there's an opportunity for us to take a $10 million standard exemption in terms of revenue loss and, and just count that as a replacement of lost revenue as a result of the pandemic. And then, we have the flexibility as we replace that lost revenue and what that does in our general fund budget, then we have the greatest amount of flexibility to look at how we spend those funds. And they can be spent on government services and more broadly, any services traditionally provided by government. So, if you look at the other allowable uses, water and sewer infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers, broadband infrastructure, et cetera, we, there's some challenges. So, those are the other allowable expense categories under these ARPA fundings. They don't align very well with some of the things that we've identified as priorities or things that we were hoping to allocate resources toward over the last couple of years and haven't been able to because of the revenue losses that we've sustained. In the presentations and workshops that the Treasury Department is putting on, they're encouraging communities to take the $10 million standard exemption. The reporting requirements are much more streamlined. And so, the Treasury Department, I think, isn't interested in having to audit all of the, you know, all of those projects. So, our recommendation will, on the next slide, kind of go into that in a little bit more detail, is to consider just using that standard exemption to replace public sector revenue loss and then allocating the dollars that that then frees up or makes available to other priorities that align with our goals and objectives. Next slide, please. So, with that, and this was included, so as I mentioned, our allocation is a little over a million and a half dollars. Our recommendation is to take that $10 million standard allowance and then to consider funding the majority of it in the categories that are identified here. So, $250,000 toward implementation of climate action plan recommendations, $500,000 on streets. And again, Councilmember McCrane, that's a category where we haven't been specific, but there may be opportunities. I think in conversations that I've had with the mayor and others, I think we want to still be sure that as we're spending that, we, we kind of quantify a broader community, wider community impact. But there are certainly opportunities to look at projects and how that $500,000, if that's an allocation that the council is comfortable with, could be spent on streets. Then parks, we've said we want to continue to expand and accelerate parks improvements, even potentially ahead of renewal of the sales tax. So, there's $350,000 dedicated toward that and/or potentially market site improvements. One of the things you'll recall is that we recently were awarded the Planning Sustainable Places grant that's going to look at improvements along that Rock Creek Channel corridor, including the market site. And so, being poised to have some dollars to potentially look at implementing some of those projects that are developed through that process is something that we've identified as important to us. The zoning code update is a project that was included in last year's supplemental requests and wasn't funded. I think the timing is even more critical or more appropriate in the 2023 budget. As I mentioned, the comprehensive plan has been slowed through the process, but we are getting ready to move that forward. And the zoning code update and the budget to do that update will help us be positioned coming out of that adoption of the comprehensive plan to then really look at what changes. We'll have the resources right there and someone on board to assist us with making those changes that we might want to make to the zoning code.
Yeah, and one other note on that, when Laura and I were discussing that piece, it also ties in a lot with the Climate Action Plan and recommendations and our sustainability goals, you know, when we're making potential zoning changes as well.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't feel like it was fair to characterize that exclusively as a climate action plan, you know, expense or benefit. But as the mayor mentioned, there are some tremendous connections there, and we'll touch on a couple of those recommendations from the Climate Action Plan Task Force. And then, finally, employee retention and recruitment. So, taking care of our employees has long been a goal of the council, even before this budget process. We've had a lot of conversations through this budget process about what we can do to make sure that we're staying competitive with the market and trying to reduce the amount of turnover that we're having in our, in our organization. So, there's $175,000 allocated for that, and I'll touch on kind of the plan for that here in just a little bit. So, all of those recommendations total $1,375,000, which leaves us about $128,000 that could be spent on other supplemental requests, which would not otherwise be feasible without replacement of the revenue losses. Any other questions there? Okay, next slide, please. So, then, what we wanted to do is really break out what our initial recommendations and, and the ties in the budget would be from a supplemental standpoint that would align with the 18 recommendations that were presented by the Climate Action Task Force at the August committee meetings. So, as you know, the mayor pointed that task force that was tasked with coming up with recommendations to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions in support of the Regional Climate Action Plan and achieve net zero emissions by 2050. One of the things that you heard from the task force in their presentation was that they want Mission to be a leader, continue to be a leader in the sustainability arena. And so, they set more aggressive goals in terms of, I mean, I think it was 2025 for municipal operations and 2035? I can't remember. I think 2035, the print's really tiny on that. 2035 overall, as opposed to 2050. Again, we've, we had some conversations following that presentation about they wanted to be very aggressive in those recommendations. I think Councilmember Davis had some thoughts or some comments about how the budget and technology aligns with some of those recommendations and timing and implementation. So, of that $250,000 that was set aside, if we're able to replace the lost revenue, we looked at additional funding for preservation and enhancement of the tree canopy. So, we already have $35,000 included in the base budget for that. That's a number and an investment that we've made and increased over the last several years. So, this additional $40,000 would bring the funds available for that to $75,000 in 2023. As a staff, we felt that, at least in a first year, we would probably be challenged to spend much more than that in that process until we can really come up with a plan, which includes, you'll see item number two, a street tree inventory. So, we have a tree inventory of trees on public property. But as we expand that look to the overall urban tree canopy and particularly street trees, in order to have the best look and develop that best plan, we really need that street tree inventory. So, there's $20,000 that would be allocated for that. Both of those, the, the numbers, I think it's intuitive, but those, we tried to match those up with the recommendations that you saw from the Climate Action Task Force. So, those align, we believe, with recommendation number six. $30,000 for an energy audit grant program, which was item 10 on their recommendations. We think that is a good starting point in the conversations that I believe that have been had with Metropolitan Energy Center about getting a, a program built and launched. Again, that's something we could certainly grow over time. But we tried to be very realistic about what we felt we had the capacity to do because I, I think what you don't want is dollars sitting there that we can't spend in a particular year. So, $30,000 for that energy audit grant program, $25,000 for conducting a bike ped plan, which was number 15 in their recommendations. We actually have the opportunity, may have the opportunity to secure some leftover. I think we talked about how on the Kansas side, Mark was not able to allocate all of the Planning Sustainable Places grant dollars in this cycle, and so, they've opened up an opportunity for additional grants. I don't know if we've had a final decision on whether that can be a new, Brian, do you know whether that can be a new project? Yeah, we haven't heard yet. So, it may have to be an expansion of the current project, or we may be able to submit a new project. If we're able to submit a new project, we would submit the bike ped plan. There, it was kind of in our conversations before submitting the first grant. And then, obviously, that would reduce that allocation, and we would just have to come up with matching dollars there. And then, what we wanted to do was leave some funding of that $250,000 available for implementation of other things throughout the year. So, for example, we've had conversations about when the Moeen contract is bid later this fall. We've talked about doing a bid alternate, which would identify the potential for adding or requiring the contractor to use electric equipment versus gas-powered equipment. We know there's a cost implication to that. But, and so, we've talked about how that will be bid, and we will be able to describe that. But these funds could be used, for example, to buy up to a program like that that would accomplish a goal. Or any number of other things that we would identify. There are some things included in the task force recommendations about education and on composting and a variety of things with residents, so printed materials and those kinds of things. But that, that gives some flexibility. The other thing that, that we're still working to pull together is that between some of the other things that are included in either the supplemental requests or the base budget, we're already spending over $100,000 in the 2023 budget in support of various climate action plan and sustainability initiatives. And so really, the total that we would be recommending that we spend on, on climate action is probably going to end up being next week when we present that total closer to 350 or 400,000. Yes.
As, as technology moves forward in the sustainability world, I would like to ensure that we have a little bit of cushion on the training side with the Sustainability Commission. There are conduit for information going from the city to the public and, and serve as kind of a technical resource to us. And I want to make sure they have the training that they need for the next year to be on board and they don't have to go out and seek other resources.
I had a question too, Laura. On the item for the preservation of the tree canopy, could you just maybe highlight a couple of the specifics on that? Is that essentially just planting more trees?
Could be planting more trees. It could be actual maintenance of existing trees so that we prolong their life. We know we have a number of trees, e- even in public parks that haven't been maintained or pruned appropriately over the years. And so they're at risk for, you know, higher risk probably for storm damage. We want to look at, as we replace trees, we want to look at the species and diversification of the species to make sure that when you have things like Emerald Dash or, or others that can really decimate the, the tree canopy, that we're kind of protecting ourselves against that. Other things, I don't know what all, I think that's kind of, kind of where we are. So it's, I think it could be a lot of new trees, but we also want to make sure that we have the ability to maintain the trees that we have and any new trees that we might plant, particularly on public property.
Yeah, makes sense.
And being able to hire certified arborists to perform that work as opposed to us guessing at what is good tree maintenance.
Laura, I had one additional comment on this category that we kind of left off of our list is we do have one additional large sustainability spend, which is our FCIP debt service.
Yes.
As well.
Good point. Well, we'll be over half a million dollars, Mayor. Thank you. Well, and, you know, as we've talked about this and as we've really, over the last couple of weeks, since the task force recommendations were presented and we've been looking at those internally, you know, there are things that the hybrid, that we've calculated the delta in the difference between the hybrid vehicles that the police department is recommending replacing in this budget versus what a gas powered or traditional vehicle would have been. We forgot until we were looking at some of the utility implications coming out of the FCIP program that there, there's a cost for us to participate in the renewables direct program, but that's a very specific choice that we made several years ago to, to participate in that. And so capturing that cost and other things, I think, again, and as we go back to, this is that piece of tying those back to the key performance areas, I envision a document where under those key performance areas, we will bring over all of the things in the budget that apply to that category with those dollar totals. And so we can really communicate with our constituents and our residents, your constituents and our residents. You know, how, how we're aligning dollars with those goals and priorities. Yes.
Thanks. I had just a couple of questions and comments first. Thank you and Emily and Sally for putting together this, this list. This is great. I think this is is exactly what the task force is looking for and will be excited. And also I think that allowing the $135,000 wiggle room is so important because we haven't done the greenhouse gas inventory since 2008. So allowing that flexibility and we don't really know where we are and understanding, okay, these are the target areas and we still have some remaining funds to use those for. So I just think that's really wise. And then I had a question about, originally, we had seen EV charging stations on a supplemental budget list. So I'm just wondering if that still exists somewhere outside of this? And then just a, a comment or recommendation, I, I know I put it on my supplemental budget request list to, you know, put in a line item for maybe some technical support or grant writing support for the organization. But with the Inflation Reduction Act coming in, it's going to come in so quickly and dollars are going to be available for just a really quick period of time. And having those dollars available to hire a grant writer quickly for staff, I think will be really helpful, especially if there's any matching dollars in that we already have these dollars, some of them available. I think that would be something to consider. And then the EV.
The EV charging stations here at the community center are included in the Parks and Recreation CIP. So that's one of those things that'll be on this list as well that just didn't show up in kind of general fund allocations and recommendations. Are we ready to move on?
Just quickly.
Yes.
As part of that, in concert with what Hillary just mentioned, it might behoove us to send at least two or three staff to a grant writing workshop so they can come back prepared to know exactly how to actually put together a grant package.
So the We're pretty good at, I'm just gonna toot our, we're pretty good at that. And we've, we've attended, a couple of us have sat in on some webinars this year, particularly related to some of the new dollars, and they haven't been helpful. But I mean, they're, they're just there. And I think the mayor was in on at least one. And I think you shared that same sentiment. That's like, it's very basic. It wasn't technical grant writing pieces. I think with the experience that we have on the staff, and again, this is something that we'll, we'll bring together in the community dialogue presentation are all those. And I know Councilmember King, you asked for that as well, kind of that listing of all the grants that we have been able to secure. So I think we have a lot of talent and experience in grant writing on the staff. We don't always have, what we found is with some of the dollars, particularly on the infrastructure side, we don't have projects that align with some of the specific goals in terms of maybe environmental or economic justice standards that really align. And so we've stretched, we're, we'll stretch and we'll continue to look at that. And that, then we have partnered with Black and Beach. They are looking at and pursuing and evaluating particularly on the stormwater infrastructure side for us, grant opportunities that might be available. So that's an expenditure that we're already making in this current year to try to chase all of those things. But okay, next slide, please. Okay, other supplemental requests. So at the outset of the budget process, you said to us, tell us what you need. And we did. And it's a huge, long exhaustive list. That also included, as we've moved through the budget process, the recommendations from the Climate Action Task Force from the PRT. And every year that list is three times as long as what we can, that's being generous, what we can afford in any one fiscal year. So as we've moved to develop the final recommendations that we're recapping this evening, we've really looked at not only department needs, but we've looked at those council and community priorities, policy goals and objectives, and the resources that we have available. So supplemental requests are recommended in a variety of funds, not just the general fund, but also the Equipment Reserve and Replacement Fund, the MCBB Fund, the Stormwater Utility Fund, the Capital Improvement Fund, and the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Fund. And we'll, we have a slide that touches on that here in just a moment. So again, as I mentioned, a- as we move to next week, my goal is to really potentially create a legend for those key performance indicators. So that as we identify a supplemental request, we can put an icon with all of the different priorities or key performance areas that, that it achieves. But in addition to those key performance areas, as we locked ourselves in a room on Celia's birthday, and she didn't get more than anybody else, just because it was her birthday, although she did ask twice, we, we came up with a list of other things that we felt like it was important to consider as we evaluated recommendations for the supplemental requests. And that list is shown here. So is, would not funding that supplemental request in a particular year be a liability, create a liability or potentially a greater cost for the city? Is it addressing a customer service or a quality of life issue for our residents? Is it contributing to operational efficiencies in the organization? And we actually named that on our whiteboard of the day as our own sanity. But we felt like operational efficiencies probably has better play with the public. Is it a best practice? Is it, does it align with council priorities and does it have connection to climate goals, which is somewhat redundant of council priorities? But we feel like that's such a big overarching theme that it was important to call that out. So as we moved through those, and we'll touch, I'll touch on some of those considerations in the supplemental requests that we looked at. So next slide, please. So one of the things that was included in the memo and what we wanted to touch on tonight. So with the replacement of the lost revenue and the recommendations that we outlined for the $1,375,000, or remember, we had that $128,000 left, which didn't go very far in funding any of the remaining supplemental requests. So we looked really long and hard at how do we, how do we scrape a few more, excuse me, of those highest priority requests into the 2023 budget. And what our recommendation is is in light of the revenue losses that we've experienced now over the last really two years, that we would recommend reducing our general fund reserves from the 25% where we are to 22 and a half percent, which is another $128,000 for this year to fund some of those highest priority supplementals. I had to get really comfortable with even reducing that, that fund balance. And I want to touch on a couple of things. So we've been at and above that fund balance for an extended period of time. I fully expect that we may end the year, we typically end the year better, we may get to the end of the year, and this is likely not an issue. We also have some additional resources in the general fund. So for example, we have $250,000 that had been, that had come to the city through the EPC Local Development Agreement. We kind of tagged that for improvements to the downtown, particularly some parking improvements. But I know this council has talked a lot about being very judicious in considering parking. So there's $250,000 in addition to a 25% fund balance that's sitting in the general fund that you have complete discretion to dip into and spend. So in fact, we really aren't, and, and you have $200,000 for the dog park, which I don't think Councilmember Thomas would allow us to. She, she'd probably have a lot to say about dipping into that. But, but there's 400, there's $450,000. Actually, more than that, because there's also an ADA category. She almost have a half a million dollars that's sitting in additional general fund reserves that you have the ability to manage or reallocate. And it just would take a, a simple council action, you know, or, or vote or motion to do that. So while we are taking, while, while our recommendation is to take $128,000 out of that 25% pot, and our policy says right now, we have to replace it within the next two years, I, I don't think it's really as dramatic a move as it might, might appear. And then the policy requires us to restore that within two years, but we would hope to be able to do that sooner.
Laura, I have a question on that too. Is it not true, I could be misremembering, but a couple of years ago, we were having those discussions about our credit rating, moving to AA plus. Were we not penalized for having too much of a general fund balance to be able to go into AAA? I thought I remembered some comment about how we actually had too much in savings and that was considered the, you know, a detriment.
It's something that gets factored in. I will tell you, I think we will never have a AAA rate. Well, we're just not big enough and don't meet those other standards. But it is certainly a factor as we look at that. You want to kind of find that sweet spot of where do you have sufficient reserves that in the event of a major, you know, economic upheaval that you had some place to go to make your debt service payments. The good news for us is that in our general fund, we have very limited debt service. So the bulk of the debt service for us comes in the street sales tax, Parks and Recreation Sales Tax, Stormwater Utility Fund. And in fact, after 2023, all of our existing street debt and all of our existing parks debt will be paid off. So the stormwater utility fee, again, is something that doesn't really fluctuate with the economy necessarily. That's something that the council sets annually. So the risk for us is pretty minimal in terms of having to dip into that. So you want to find that spot of what protects you. But then as your rating agencies look at you, they say, well, if you're building, if you're stockpiling all of this other money, do you really need to issue the debt? I mean, that becomes more of the question of do you really need to issue debt? Or can you cash flow or do a pay as you go on some of these projects?
And those GFAO, I think I have the acronym right. GFOA, switching my letters around, recommendations are still at a percentage that is lower than even this revised 22 and a half percent, right?
Yeah. So they recommend typically somewhere between five and 15%. So we're above that kind of best practice. We feel more comfortable above that. And again, I played with a variety of numbers. And you'll see here, there may be an opportunity to even reduce that need as we go through the next slide. So when we look at the 2022 revised and 2023 supplemental requests, and these are specific to the general fund, and we'll touch on the other funds here in just a moment. As I mentioned, $128,000 from excess or in excess fund balance, which is basically created through the replacement of the lost revenue. And then $128,000 of general fund reserves gives us a total of $256,000 available to spend on supplemental requests. As the, the department directors met and talked about this and looked at, again, highest priorities, the recommendations that have been presented this evening or are being presented this evening include the $97,000 for network components. That's certainly an operational efficiency issue. That's a liability issue. That's a customer service issue. Checks a lot of those boxes for us. Taser replacement, you'll recall that we sort of do, it's not really a traditional lease purchase, but we pay for tasers or have paid for our taser replacement over a five-year period. And so in the 2023 budget, there would be $20,000 to begin that process anew. I think you've heard the chief and Deputy Chief Lane is here this evening if you have any questions. But our tasers are really at the point where we don't have enough that are operational, that each officer can have their own on every shift. So there's some sharing of that. I think parts are a challenge. They've, they're out of, they're out of warranty. So that creates, again, that's potentially a liability issue for us. Certainly tasers are something that's been important to our department for many years as an option for, you know, less than lethal type situations. The department has applied for a grant through the Department of Justice for the full $100,000 expense of the tasers. That grant application was due at the end of July, I think. And we don't have any, we're sort of in that holding pattern, hopefully not as long as what Land and Water Conservation Fund grants. So we don't know if that's something that will be awarded or not. But if we are, then obviously that would pull, immediately pull this $20,000 out of, we wouldn't need to spend that $20,000. And I put the asterix in the wrong place. But okay, so next, we're looking at an increase in the park maintenance budget. So we have $50,000 that's already included in the base budget. But as we've talked about, this increased investment in our parks, both with new improvements, but a specific focus on doing a better job of maintaining what we have. We are recommending that we increase that line item budget by $35,000 in 2023 to allow for that. That also is something that aligns very closely with the PRT recommendations that have been provided. I'm looking at HR consulting and training support. We have been kind of scraping together funds this year to get a supervisory training program off the ground, which has, I think, been very successful. It helps us with succession planning. It also helps us with liability issues as we do a better job of training all of our managers throughout the organization on HR policies, practices and procedures. And so this would be a combination of, of that sort of consulting on the bigger picture issues. Most of our HR issues we can handle in-house. Occasionally, we get one where we have to go seek some outside support and guidance. The, the only position that we're recommending, so unfortunately, The, the only position that we're recommending, so unfortunately the budget, and there were several positions that were included in the supplemental requests, I think all of which were of high priority. But obviously with where we are in terms of just the revenue situation and looking at personnel expenses being a year after year and an ongoing expense for us, we were very, very careful in what we recommended. But just looking at the development activity that we've experienced in the last couple of years and keeping up as well as succession and planning, we are recommending the addition of a building inspector's position in the 2023 budget. And then some funds to move forward with diversity initiatives. So that's the total of $256,000. And I'll be happy to stop there and answer any questions. Yeah, Debbie?
Is there any way, and I know you're in the middle of a budget cycle and probably not now, but at some point, is there any way to put together a matrix that shows exactly where we are sharing resources with other cities around us, whether it be personnel, equipment, processes? Just so we could get an idea that, that we're really attempting to, to share across the board to alleviate all the costs on mission?
Yeah, it's going to be a short list. We can do that, but I think right now it would be, I don't, and it's maybe not even fair to call them shared services. So we contract with the county for IT services, right? That's probably the biggest expense that we have.
Rental inspections, are we still doing rental inspections through them?
We are doing rental inspections, but we're doing rental inspections in-house. And we aren't, we aren't doing those in concert with any other, so you know, any other community. But the animal control services, which we are providing to other cities as under contract and receiving about $60,000 a year in order to support that. And that allows us to not only cover our own animal control needs, but also the community service officer. So the fingerprinting, some of the support that helps keep officers on the street kind of expensive. So it's not much longer than that. We can, we can certainly try to characterize some of that, but it's not going to be a big, big matrix.
I, for a long time, have been trying to get us to spend our excess fund balance, which you well know. But the idea of moving it down below 25%, I think scares me only a little bit in that we don't have the feasibility study results from the community center. And that fund balance is really what saved us from being, you know, having an unsustainable model here at the community center. So I'm just wondering, you know, if you have any expectations or anticipate, I know we're going to have that conversation and we're going to amend the budget, you know, at a certain time later this year. But I'm just wondering if you have any expectations of, of how that, you know, are there going to be enough, you know, changes to that that could potentially cover that $128,000? Just, I, I think that's just what makes me a little uneasy.
Yeah, I think, I think a couple of things. I think, remember that we're sitting in August of 2022 and none of these expenditures could happen until at least January 1st of 2023. And we have the ability and we often, in years where we have questions going into the next year's budget, we'll time this so we can say, we're not going to hire this position or we're not going to purchase this piece of equipment or we're not going to move forward so that we have, you know, kind of have that ability to look at those kinds of things. So I think we can build out a plan. And again, I think before we get to the end of the year, we will have those recommendations. And so as we make adjustments for the future, we can also then look at those things which are, have potentially been recommended in the 2023 budget. So a lot of it's just timing and or reallocation. Okay, just briefly, I wanted to touch on the personnel impacts because as you know, that's the largest expenditure in our general fund. And it's over 60, close to 65% of our total general fund expenditure. So we always want to be careful and thoughtful in the expenses that we take on. And so this just kind of breaks it down and it was broken down in the memo. But we are recommending to absorb, we've gone back and looked at kind of where we traditionally end a year, a fiscal year with parks maintenance. And that's one of the things that we're talking about right now with the feasibility study. So right now, the community center budget is carrying all of our parks and recreation expenses. So you have a parks, a full-time parks maintenance technician. You have a significant portion of a director's time that's not being spent exclusively on operations and maintenance of the center. So part of what we're doing is trying to cull out, you know, those expenses and be able to capture those. And we can say, you know, we're committed and, and we may, there may be things that we want to do. We may want to create a parks, sort of another divisional budget, if you will, for parks maintenance. So that's clear, more clearly illustrated. But we think that as we move forward, and because we're not bringing, obviously in the first year in 2023, we won't have a lot of new park improvements that we'll be adding, but we think we can add about $3,500, 3,500 hours a year for park maintenance. And we think that can be absorbed primarily in the existing part-time budget. We touched on the addition of a building inspector and then $175,000 would be split on reclassification. So there are several positions where job responsibilities have changed over the last year. And we need to look at kind of an expansion or a reclassification of that within our salary structure to appropriately capture the work that's being done by those employees. And then that $175,000, we're showing it all right now in 20, excuse me, 2023. But our intent would be to pull a portion of that into the 2022 budget. I know that's something we've talked about, making sure we can look at that. So as we've touched on in the past, both the 2022 estimated and 2023 budgets already have a three and a half merit, percent merit pool built in the base budget and a 5% increase in health insurance for 2023. And so the addition of that $175,000 allows us to look at some retention recommendations and adjustments that we need to make to the overall structure and market placement for our employees. And we'll bring back ideally in September, but September is a little busy this year. Kind of a final recommendation so that you can see very specifically what that would be. So again, our goal there and your goal has been to keep our employees aligned with both the external market and internal considerations and to address those reclassifications where job situations have changed. But it's an ever-moving target. So next slide, please. So this one, this slide just tries to recap the supplemental requests that are captured in other funds. And then we'll talk about the big giant spreadsheet that's at your places, includes everything, including those things that were not recommended, but that were presented to you in previous work sessions. So as we talked about, the pedestrian activated stop signs at 61st and Broadmoor. It's included and it's been factored in and added into the CIP fund, which is a part of the streets program in our 2023 CIP. Talked about increasing the creek cleanout from a four-year cycle to a two-year cycle. Again, that's been adjusted and accounted for in the stormwater CIP program. And we had originally proposed them for the last couple of years. We've done two new sets of banners for Johnson Drive. As we looked at kind of the climate action task force recommendations and particularly the recommendation around trying to expand native plantings, we felt like our recommendation would be to just do one set of banners for 2023. We've kind of accumulated enough now that we can sort of rotate and have enough variety. But to do one new set and then to take, which would be about $7,900 and then to take the balance of that and develop a specific design plan for native plantings along the Johnson Drive corridor between Lamar and Knoll to replace what's either died or overgrown in those planter beds. And then again, that's another, once we have that design plan, we'll be able to then estimate the cost of doing that. And that may be something else that we would bring back as a recommendation to consider using some portion of those excess climate action dollars to actually accomplish that redo of the Johnson Drive plantings. Then we move into the equipment reserve and replacement fund. The smaller snowplow equipment, equipment that allows us to be more efficient on sidewalks is actually recommended to be purchased in 2022. And so my guess is that Celia will, if we approve the budget with that included on September 7th, that on September 21st, you may have a, another action item to get that purchased so that it's available to us for this winter season. Is that a fair assessment? Yeah. Purchase of the police admin vehicles, two of those hybrid models at $80,000. So as we've looked and calculated that, it's about $8,900 in additional expenses for us to purchase the hybrids. There's about a 33% reduction in fuel savings, which is hard to, a little bit hard to calculate. But again, we'll recognize that as well. Those are recommended for 2023. The purchase of and replacement of an F-450 truck in the Public Works Department. The Gator utility vehicle, you may recall in the supplemental request, we actually had two. Parks and Recreation had one that was electric. Public Works had a second one, which is diesel. Is that right, Celia? Your Gator? Yeah. So Public Works and Parks and the Police Department have kind of put their heads together on a variety of these vehicle and equipment requests. Public Works, until we get to a point where we have the staff to plow the snow on the trails in our parks in accordance with the expectations that our residents have, Public Works would like to hold on to that responsibility, which I think is fair. And I think is a great testament to customer service. So the plan right now is to replace the diesel, which actually has the capacity to do some of that heavier work in Public Works and then not sell the existing one and kind of use that as a pass down to parks so that we have the flexibility. And then as we really either increase the staffing on the park maintenance side and really move toward the future allocation of those responsibilities, we can consider the needs in future budget years. And then you may recall, there was a request for another truck in the Public Works Department now that we've been fully staffed for a long period of time. And we actually have enough people to put in all of our trucks and get crews on the streets, a truck for the Assistant Public Works Superintendent. Police Department also had a request to replace the CSO truck or the animal control truck, feeling like the cage on the back was oversized, not efficient and potentially create some workers' compensation liability issues for staff. So I have to commend the department directors on getting together and looking at replacing that CSO vehicle, passing that CSO truck down to Public Works and just sort of rotating within the fleet without, without adding to that. And again, on the CSO and animal control side, that's also a very outward facing customer service issue that, you know, we provide those services via contract to other communities. So making sure we can do that effectively is important. And then also included, and it really got rolled into the base budget because we took some funds from those existing EPC funds that, that I referenced earlier and the ADA funds that have been sitting in sort of committed categories. So if you look at your general fund summary sheet that's at your place and you look at, our, our fund balance falls into three categories, restricted, committed and assigned. And again, restricted is the one that takes a very formal, very structured motion from the council. Committed and assigned, you have a great deal of flexibility. So we had those parking lot funds for EPC in the assigned category. An ADA is committed, but committed only to be spent on ADA expenses. So you may recall that last two weeks ago, we approved a master services agreement and a task order for phase one of an ADA plan that would look at our streets. In 2022, we're recommending phase two of an ADA plan that would address public facilities. But we're drawing on those committed funds that can only be spent on ADA projects. So we're still sitting on, at the end of 2023, about $144,000. We're estimating in ADA funds that could be used actually then for implementation of projects or priorities that come out of either that phase one or phase two plan. And then we took, or recommended to take $20,000 for our planning sustainable places grant match from those EPC funds in looking at those improvements to the, kind of along the downtown corridor in the Rock Creek Channel. Any questions on those? And then I will very quickly highlight the things that we didn't recommend. And I missed one on this list. So we're also recommending the addition of a radio repeater within the police station. So historically, we've had really poor connections or the ability, radio reception problems in the police department, particularly in the booking and holding areas. This repeater is a $12,000 expense, but it can be purchased with asset forfeiture funds. So we're not tapping into the general, general fund for that. Okay, so just very quickly, those things which, you go about halfway down the second page on the big 11 by 17 sheet. So everything that has an X by it on the first page and a half are the things that are included or recommended in the budget. We talked about the Public Works Assistant Superintendent's truck. Again, the engineering inspector's position was something that we just didn't feel we had the capacity to do. I think we need to revisit that definitely in a future budget year. So that needs to stay on the list. We talked about the Gator utility, the second Gator utility vehicle, the car wash system. It is one year past its anticipated 15-year life cycle. But in talking with Public Works, they feel like they can hold off on replacement of that for one more year. Engineering support, which was some additional support for on-call contracts for grant writing, additional engineering analysis to look at the feasibility of larger projects identified through the comp plan. And this may be something that depending on where we end the year, we may want to come back and revisit that expense. Additionally, you know, so the notes kind of off to the side, either hold or consider that could be, some of that could be considered as part of the $500,000 lost revenue allocation to streets. The walk behind concrete saw isn't, is an important replacement because our current equipment does not meet OSHA standards. But the department was able to rearrange some of their existing line items and accommodate that in the budget. So we're, we'll actually be purchasing that. It just isn't going to take additional supplemental funds to do it. Community Development Director, again, as I mentioned, still an important priority that we want to revisit in a future budget year. Building codes updates, and we'll be coming back to you. That's a staff resource time allocation without a budgetary impact. We didn't have any computer replacement for 2023. That will cycle back, will have some dollars associated with that in 2024. IT contractual support, we currently have about $224,000 in the base budget for that. And that's a variety of, that's our overall IT support. That is software, maintenance agreements, licensing agreements, et cetera. Kind of holding that for mid-year valuation. We, we have $100,000 in the base budget for replacement of the financial management system. So depending on timing and staff resource allocation, I think there's an opportunity to come back and revisit several IT issues as we move forward. On the PR communications, we have $58,000 currently in the base budget. We have been working over the last month or a month and a half to really look at tapping into some additional internal resources to accomplish that. And I think we're seeing some great success. So we are recommending holding off on that additional $21,000 at this point. There was a request to replace all the AEDs in our facilities and our patrol cars. And as we talked about that, they are still functional and the parts are still available. So it's not creating a liability issue for us. And we think there could be some additional grant opportunities for us to pursue to get those replaced. And so the chief will be looking at that. And then again, we touched on the Johnson Drive landscaping, kind of a redo and then the ongoing maintenance. Then the other things not recommended that really hadn't kind of even floated to the top before you see a lot of the facility issues. Two things I would touch on, kind of almost at the bottom of the page, you see a concept plan for Johnson Drive west of Lamar. That, and that may be again, something that we want to look at as part of that lost revenue allocation for streets that would really help us firm up what we need or want to do on Johnson Drive between Lamar and Metcalf and help us probably pursue some grant dollars. and help us probably pursue some grant dollars or smack dollars to accomplish that. And then under the Big Ideas section in previous meetings, we talked about market site improvements, among other things. And we saw, we added some of that as part of that parks and market site improvements in our last revenue recommendations.
Laura, I have a question.
Yeah.
When will, can you remind me when we will be in a position to kind of make a final decision on the space needs between City Hall and the Police Department?
Yeah, I don't, I have no idea. I think we know kind of what generally the space needs are. I think it's just we're, we're having some interesting conversations internally about just exploring what other opportunities as we take a step back and we look at potential office space that may be available in our community based on just changes in how people are working at coming out of the pandemic and whether there's an opportunity for us without having to invest 19 or 20 million dollars to accomplish that. So there's, there's still a lot kind of going on behind the scenes. And we know, I mean, every day we, and I come into that building and I think about what's happening downstairs, and we need to, we need to get back to that. I think if we can, you know, we, last year, we pinned down the street sales tax, I think. Hopefully this fall, we can pin down the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax. And then kind of next on, at least my radar is really, that's kind of the next big public facility hurdle that we need to tackle.
Laura, I have a quick question or just a comment. As you're moving forward past 2023 and you're looking at the parking lot scenarios, we, I would really like us to look at the differentiation between pervious and impervious parking. That's the climate action. That's sustainable practice at its best. And I know it's probably more expensive, but I'd like the cost breakdown before we just proceed like usual.
Yeah, no, and that's fair. And that's why you really didn't see that. That's not accounted for in any of these costs, but I think that will certainly be a factor in this Planning Sustainable Places Grant process as we look at either maintenance of any parking that exists along that study area. Because that aligns with not only water quality goals, but
Stormwater.
Stormwater, all of that. So. Okay, yes.
Do we have any further information about the Martway office buildings and what's happening there? I know that the maintenance of those facilities is pretty lousy. And I don't know if there's any possibility of looking at that in terms of the space needs for the city.
There is. That's an, that's an ever-changing, and in fact, it just changed again today. We had, we had a preliminary development plan that had been resubmitted recently, and it was withdrawn this morning. And so we're exploring what that means. So we'll be back shortly with potentially some updates on that. And I know that our neighborhood services officer and Brian in separate conversations with the property owner have been trying to work on maintenance. Okay, any other questions on supplementals, either funded or not funded? Next slide. Okay, so here's what we have left. Next week, as we've talked about, is our community dialogue on the budget. September 7th is our special city council meeting. So yesterday in the legal record, our notices of the budget public hearings were published in accordance with the Senate Bill 13 requirements. There's also a requirement that those be posted on our city website, and so those will go up tomorrow. We wanted to just kind of get through. Excuse me, tonight's discussion will post those. They have to be done 10 days. The the budget piece that has always been required has to be done 14 days in advance of your meeting date. The Senate Bill 13 requirements have to be done 10 days in advance. So we're in great shape as long as we get them up this week. So tomorrow we will post those. I will hold those budget public hearings. So we will have the special city council meeting at 6:00. And then we'll roll into our two committee meetings, which will be lengthy. So I think I said last month, pack a lunch. And then we just then will internally wrap everything up, and we have to get the state budget forms and everything else turned into the county by October 1st. Any final questions for Laura? It's not just me, it's this whole team, trust me, with, you know. We all know we have to give a little bit at the office, but this group is exceptional in terms of just really being able to take a step back and you know, advocate not only for their own departments, which is their, their job, but to look at that bigger picture and to consider that in terms of the community priorities and your priorities and
Do we have an idea of how many people have asked for signs on the city tax, city sales tax for Parks and Rec?
It's not, that's the grassroots group. So we have nothing to do with the signs and won't have anything to do with the signs. We can't have anything to do with the signs. There are probably a couple of people in this room who could answer your questions after the meeting. All right, that's all I have this evening. All right, that, our work session is adjourned.
Good night, everyone.